Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for February eighth of two thousand and twenty-four to order. Just to make note, Ken Hall and Nick Fullhouse both have, excuse us. So first up, we have approval of our agenda. So, Mark.
Smart.
All right, Don, and then Andrew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? First up, we have our teaching and learning feature.
Yes, so tonight, we have an opportunity to do a little bit of wording alongside of some individuals who've been researching and coming alongside teachers and administrators to begin to address artificial intelligence. And so I'll turn it over to Craig Steenstra and Mr. Semansky and Mr. Beal, I believe? Am I making that part up? Oh, and Mr. Anderson, good. I'll go ahead and turn it over. Feel free to introduce yourselves. You can attend to the podium if that's where you would like.
Good evening. I don't know if I have to talk into this thing, but I'll just talk normal. So today, we're just going to talk about artificial intelligence and specifically what that looks like here at Hudsonville High School as well as Hudsonville Public Schools as a whole. So first thing I want to just go over really quick, and this was my task, just to kind of talk about what is AI actually in education? Because we hear a lot of things about artificial intelligence, and we hear that word AI, and we can get a little scared about what it might mean or what it might mean for us because we've all seen Terminator, and we know how that ends. So AI is really the two forms of AI that you all probably, that everyone probably is aware of, is generative AI and machine learning. And machine learning is like the suggestions that you get when you order something on Amazon. That's just machine learning. That's just based upon what you've done in the past. Amazon is saying, buy this too. Like, Amazon Prime, one day, we're going to get you. Generative AI is ChatGPT. It's this eagle that's up here that I just typed in, blue-yellow robot eagle, and it popped up that. It basically takes a wealth of human knowledge that it's trained on, and when you ask it something, it puts something out. And in this case, it was this blue and yellow robot eagle. And AI today is built into a lot of tech platforms. It's hard to download an app right now that doesn't say uses artificial intelligence. It might use artificial intelligence, chances are, it just uses machine learning, but it's all under the umbrella of artificial intelligence. And most of the time, it's just generative AI. It's just taking what it's been trained on and create something. In education, that looks pretty much like ChatGPT. And there's some things that help ease productivity, make things more efficient, but more importantly, it allows personalized support, which these gentlemen are going to talk about next. So we're going to back up.
Sure. So we've actually been able to utilize a little bit of the artificial intelligence tools for teachers and some of the training that we've done already this year via our PLC consultant, Dr. Ray. Even in August, he shared a tool called EduAid AI, which can take any standard that you kind of put into it from any grade level, and it really automatically generates for you based on some pretty simple prompts and standards and maybe learning targets. Will generate lesson stems and unit plans, even assessments and formative assessments. And really, we kind of let teachers kind of play around with that in August as we gave them some tasks and dieted for their own cycle of ingredient PLCs. So we've actually been able to utilize some of this with our staff. A few of us also got to attend a training that was held in the fall through MAS SP around AI in education. And a lot of it is really talking about prompt writing and having a way to introduce it slowly to students is going to be important because much like all of the digital tools that we are so accustomed to and probably take for granted now, this is going to be something that isn't going away and that students are going to need to be somewhat familiar with. But like Joe said, a lot of it right now is machine learning and generative text and predictive text. And you would think that the first department that would probably have a little bit of concern about this would be English because of the way that ChatGPT and other tools that are out there right now are able to generate text or essays off of simple prompts that are not necessarily plagiarized because they're not pulling it from exact sources the way you might copy paste from Wikipedia or something like that. It's generating brand-new texts out of a pretty simple prompt. So I asked Mike to share kind of how the English department specifically has changed how they have gone about, you know, when I was a kid, and maybe some of you were students who were given a prompt and asked to write an essay and maybe go through some draft forms, but that final copy you might work on a lot at home. And I want Mike to kind of talk a little bit more about how the English department, especially at the high schools, kind of tackled this, you know, there. So go ahead, Mike. Thanks.
We, of course, know that our students need to be exposed to AI, and we want them to have some experiences using it, but there are also other instances for assessment during which we need students to develop their own thinking and critical thinking skills and their writing skills. So we wanted to really kind of maybe reshape how we frame assignments and assessments when it comes to writing a little bit. We have found some success in focusing students more on the process because that is an important part of the writing skills that we teach and really also grading that process along the way. We found that that might dissuade students from the temptations, maybe turn to AI or other maybe academically, honestly questionable, you know, methods and producing an essay maybe the night before it's due. You know, we want students to be engaged in the process throughout, and by emphasizing some of that process, we get students to really build on their own thinking. That doesn't mean that there's no place for AI, there certainly is. We've been using AI to maybe show students how some responses to prompts might look and to analyze the output of AI and maybe even generate ideas and brainstorm, but there are instances in which we want students to develop their own thinking and their own writing. And we found that by emphasizing the process and checking in throughout the process, students are much less likely to turn to a quick fix if they need to because we need them to develop those critical thinking skills as well. So we've had some success with that, for sure. So additionally, we want to continue our response and explore some of the pros and cons, the benefits and pitfalls. So we do have a SOR five committee that has started to explore this more and think about what this means for our teachers and our students. And I did include a couple visuals to help you see some of the potential. This is a site called Magic School that's designed for teachers and makes it easier for them to produce things that they can use within their instructions. Everything from multiple choice assessments to more engaging lesson plans to difficult emails to parents that they can use to help draft and then work from it to customize it or craft it and save themselves a lot of time on their traditional tasks. We also have this, which is a tool called Grammarly, and it is very useful and helpful, but also could cross that line of academic dishonesty very easily where a student can enter a prompt, say, give me an introductory paragraph on blank, and make it sound like a tenth grader wrote it. And there it goes. So some of the decisions we're forced to make include, what do we block on the network side? Do we try to block everything and that turns into a game of whack-a-mole because it's pretty much inevitable? Or do we support our staff, help them understand it better, and allow them to make the decision of when it makes sense in a given task for students to use it and help them learn how to use it? Because when they're graduating, they're, like us, probably going to be using these tools to be more productive and efficient in their work. And if we're training them to be efficient and successful citizens, that's probably something we should be helping them with. So some of the other things we're looking at, do we need to update our handbooks? Our board language already specifies AI cannot be used without permission of the teacher. So how can we extend from that to make sure students are aware of this and have a clear understanding of what's okay and what's not? Definitely going to continue to train and provide information to the staff about what they can do and how they can use it. And just think about how we can communicate to everybody and we're on the same page and trying to be aware of and utilizing it for the powers of good. Pretty much it. And that's all we had to share tonight. If you have any questions, we can certainly try and answer them. Or maybe we could just have AI. Turn on the mic.
So just a comment slash question, when I think about, when you're talking about the processes about how the student has to show the process they've gone through, I'm assuming it is sort of like showing your work along the way, which will help a staff person. But what other tools are you as a staff person implementing to be able to pick up on that? Because obviously, unless you're trained to look for that, and how are you dealing with those conflicts?
We do have some technology tools of our own to assess the authenticity of the work. Although, if we're looking at something like just a simple AI detector, they exist, they're out there. OpenAI, the company that created ChatGPT famously had their own AI detector, and they pulled it off the web because it was unreliable. But there are a number out there that profess to detect AI reliably, but we can never be a hundred percent certain with those. But we do have means to technologically monitor the process through just our regular Google platform, and teachers are becoming more and more adept at that. So we can tell when and how students are writing, down to the letters that are typed or what chunks are copied and pasted in and how. And also, we are emphasizing with students that in our classrooms, just like in our society, the burden of establishing authenticity is moving from consumer to creator. You know, we want students to know that if there are too many red flags, you haven't established authenticity. And it's no longer just my job as the teacher or any of our teachers' jobs to say, is this authentic or is it not? It's the student's job to prove that, just like it will be creators online, it's their job to prove that their work is authentic if the situation calls for authentic product. So that's, we're emphasizing those elements with students as well, saying that, you know, that burden is moving to you as the creator, as the writer, as the person who is creating the document or the project or the website or any of these projects that we're putting together. How many, how many cases have they had to deal with concerning, you know, concerning potentially AI-based academic dishonesty? There have been a handful. There was a significant spike right around, I want to say, December of last school year when ChatGPT three went live, I think. There was, you know, kids knew about it before a lot of teachers did, and they turned to it, and it was kind of easily detectable. The other thing that students are, however, starting to realize is that we also, as teachers, as professionals, do have samples of the work that they're putting together without AI. And if the two elements don't really match up, there's, that's another one of those red flags. So, but I would say it runs to about a handful. I wouldn't say we've seen more academic dishonesty, just the type of academic dishonesty has changed in terms of maybe moving from plagiarism, copy paste without citation, or submitting someone else's work as their own, to now, the same students who might engage in that activity might be moving towards AI as a means of academic dishonesty. And it's, it's not an overwhelming amount. We know from research in colleges that there are, you know, there's a small number of students on one end of the spectrum that are kind of predisposed to search for the easy way out. There are a small number of students on the other end of the spectrum who will never turn to that. The largest group of students is in the middle of that bell curve, and they can be influenced one way or the other, and it's our job to influence them to make those better decisions, which is why we're working through that process and that kind of that shifting of the burden crew. So it's, it's a handful. I hesitate to put an exact number on it, but as English department chair, I see most of them that come through from our department. Again, I wouldn't say the numbers of academic dishonesty, just the type that has shifted.
There are two fewer at least that are sitting in the audience right now paying very close attention to this.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it feels like just kind of a major upgrade from spell check to grammar check to AI.
The Grammarly extension that Craig showed earlier is really the manifestation of that. Grammarly started out as kind of an enhanced grammar and spell check from, that you're familiar with in Microsoft Word or Google Docs, and now they've started incorporating some of the, it started with the machine learning that Joe was talking about with predictive text, and now they've moved into generative AI, even at the free tier. And it can be turned off by individual users, but it's also a very, very useful tool. So we're going to have to navigate how we use it. Now, again, we do have tools that can tell us when text comes into a document and how much, and we do, we are starting to require students, you know, all of their work has to take place in the documents that we provide for them on Google Classroom or through Google Docs, and that allows us to monitor the process and really enhance the process a little bit for them as well and how useful that process is. But yeah, it really has been, it really has kind of evolved from that grammar and spell check that it started incorporating some of the machine learning, now the generative AI is kind of a natural progression.
I saw on one of your team before the meeting that I, my wife had a quilt she wanted to sell on eBay. I know nothing about quilts, but I put it on eBay, put a basic, basic description, and AI popped up with this marvelous description. So I thought to myself, why should I mess with this? Makes it easy.
And I, I think, you know, and those are the types of situations that we have to communicate. It depends on the context and what's involved for the situation. That's a perfect example of AI making someone's life easier when, you know, original text and original, there's no critical thinking skills necessary for that particular process. So we've got to show students when they can use it, how they can leverage it, how it can help them maybe on steps along the way for some of their critical thinking, but when they have to take over.
But at the same time, I've done a fair amount of writing, and I would want the writing to be my own.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And want people to know that I didn't steal this from anybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next up, we have our recognition of visitors and hearing the people present. Jennifer Johnson.
Good evening. As I sat about thinking, as I sat thinking about my comments for tonight, all I could think about was my answer to discuss an embarrassment of behavior certain board members exhibited at the last work session. Your conduct was not unwound professional, it was a disgrace to this district, its staff and our students. Your elected members of the Board of Education for the school district may behave like petulant children. Barb, you're the president of the board, and you had zero control of the meeting, and that went so far off the rails that one of the members violated the Open Meetings Act, and you did nothing to stop it. You have missed every single opportunity to be a leader in our district, and students are suffering because of it. Greg Chansky, shame on you. Your behavior at the last meeting was completely unacceptable. Standing up and yelling at the superintendent during an open meeting demonstrated perfectly why the sole results were so unfavorable towards you. You ran and were elected to a public position. Public opinion comes along with that. Quit blaming others and expecting them to defend you when your own actions and comments are the reason for the disdain. You violated the Open Meetings Act by bringing confidential information from closed-door sessions out to the public, and Barb, you allowed it. Neither of you were fit for this board. Mark Davis, the fact that you feel a public school system should pay for someone's alcohol is a clear demonstration of why you should no longer be on this board. You also are upset about public opinion and are blaming the superintendent when in actuality it's your own darn fault. I stood in the media center with two school administrators and a few teachers while you stood there talking negatively about Nick to one of the meeting attendees. You're unprofessional and clearly no longer here for the students in this district. Your no vote on Dr. Vander Jack's view only sent the head staff's negative opinion of you. Your judgment is no longer sound. It is fueled by Dana O'Dell and his special interest group, and every month you remain on this board, your credibility further decreases. You should resign before you are viewed as the worst board member in the history of the district. Speaking of Dana O'Dell's special interest group, isn't there a code of conduct in place that prohibits actively participating or engaging with special interest groups? So every time you, Barb, and or Greg meet with him, you're violating your oath of office. Nick, unfortunately, he's not here, so I will skip parts of that part. I will email that directly. This school system and these kids are supposed to be why you all are here. You need to start acting like it or resign from this board. Greg, I sincerely hope that you have apologized to Dr. Vander Jack for disgusting behavior at the last meeting, and I highly suggest you do it publicly tonight as well. Actually, I think this applies to all three of you. I'll be waiting to hear for your apologies during the comments at the end of the meeting.
Next, Sarah McToysick.
Okay. I didn't have to count, but if you could pass them around, I would greatly appreciate it. My name is Sarah McToysick, and I am running on the prosecutor ballot as a Republican for Ottawa County Prosecutor's Office. I, first of all, thank you for your service and thank you for this time that you give me today. People wonder why as a prosecutor, relevant to the school board, but I want to encourage more and more school boards working with our office, and as I'll talk to you a little bit about, I think it's an extremely important relationship. I am currently your chief assistant prosecutor. This is my twenty-third year serving as a prosecutor here in Ottawa County. Obviously, my passion, it's what I hope to continue doing for a very long time. I am endorsed by our current prosecutor and former prosecutors, Lee Fisher and Ronald France, and our current and past sheriffs, Gary Rosamont and Steve Kemper. I come from a military background, three generations of Army officers. My brother did not graduate from Hudsonville, I apologize to that, but he graduated the top one percent of his class at West Point. Personally about me, this is very nice because this is probably the only group that potentially knows how to say my last name because I have four students that have gone through or currently are educating, educated here in Hudsonville. So my daughters, I have two sets of twins. My oldest daughter's graduated last year, and my son and daughter twins are currently freshmen here at the high school. So put in applause, go Eagles. It's very nice to be in a school district that I'm familiar with. Being a prosecutor is extremely important to me, and I think it's extremely important to the community, and I need to educate everybody on that for a moment. Prosecutors handle everything from the speeding tickets that I'm not going to ask how many of us have gotten, all the way up to homicides, which I can pretty much assume that none of you have dealt with, I'm hoping. We handle everything in between domestic violence cases, drunk driving cases. We have a department that specifically focuses on juvenile delinquencies. Obviously, that's a strong reflection of our schools and how we work with our schools to try to make sure that our juveniles don't become adult offenders. So we're working really hard to make sure that we have those programs available to our students and working with the schools and trying to increase our workings with the schools to try to get those programs in place so we can prevent those juveniles from becoming adult offenders. We focus, we have multidisciplinary teams for our very youngest in our community to our vulnerable adults in our community. I care very much about this job. I care very much about the school and this community, and I'm asking for your support. If anybody has any questions, Sarah M. for prosecutor, very cleverly, I didn't make anybody spell my last name, dot com, or Sarah M. for prosecutor on Facebook or Instagram. Again, thank you so much.
Jenna Brung.
Before I set my time, I was pretty sure that we weren't allowed to have campaign people here, candidates come and speak use this time for that. Okay. All right, so unfortunately, Nick is not here, but I will email the comments that I have for him, but I do want to mention them here. Before I get distracted with my other points, I want to take a moment to thank Nick Full Heights for attending the Baldwin Street Middle School Wrestling Match last week. It was great to see him there, knowing that he did not have a child participating. Nick and I haven't always seen eye to eye on everything, but I was glad to share a couple minutes with him, learn more about him and his family. He listened carefully, as I talked about, and introduced my wrestlers, and he offered suggestions that for other sports, I could benefit one of my children. This is how you bridge the gap in the community. You attend events, you listen to community members, you show an investment in the well-being of a district. Thank you, Nick. I'm glad that we were able to share that moment together. Since the last work session, I've been trying to articulate how I felt as a community member and as a parent in this district, listening to the chaos that erupted during the superintendent evaluation goals portion of the agenda. This meeting and the way it was handled by the board president has played over and over in my mind and involves anger and rage at the complete ignorance and incompetence of three of our board members. They are bound and determined to manipulate the MASB evaluation tool and turn it into a popularity contest for board members. Barb, Greg, and Mark, you are not liked by teachers and community members, and that is a statement that is proven by the SOR five survey. Because of that, you have initiated a vendetta against our superintendent because he's better liked than you? Because your feelings are hurt, because of your ego? The rational play would be for you to hitch your wagon to the more likable administrator instead of seeking revenge in instances where you felt slighted. Do you honestly think that you will win this vendetta within a community in a district where you are already not trusted, dismissed as ignorant, and viewed as generally unsafe people? This witch hunt has only been created among more enemies for the board. You continue to remind us why we don't like you. You are punching a bruise and wondering why it's not healing. If you think that I'm wrong, ask Joe Moss what happens in Ottawa County when you use a position of power to wage war on old wounds. While our district might not lose four million dollars, it could cost us a dedicated, well-respected, and highly endorsed superintendent. And where will we be left then? What replacements will apply for a job where there is hostility against our superintendent? Have you thought that through? By all means, continue your needless distractions. Continue proving us right that you three are unlikable, uneducated, unable to lead, and incompetent as board members. It's not like we could be using our time and resources to actually benefit our district.
MJ Hernandez.
Good evening. You may have noticed that I have not been present recently at board meetings. I have two kids under five, and things have been very busy. However, thanks to the district, I have been able to watch meetings at home using the recordings posted on the board section of the website. Thank you for that. I arranged my evening to be here tonight, however, because I watched the last board's work session online, and it was just absolutely atrocious. Three members of this board, I'm looking at you, Barb, Greg, and Mark, exposed their thinly veiled motives to erode Dr. Vander Jack's highly effective evaluation score, which is well deserved, by the way, since he does an amazing job. You three know that you are not able to fire him without cause. So you tried to pick subjective goals so you could claim he wasn't achieving them. Your attempt at setting goals for him that are neither measurable, hence the name smart, nor his responsibility, makes your motives plain as day, and it's disgusting that you would want to rob our district of such an amazing superintendent. So let's talk about why you cannot set these types of goals that you were trying to set for him, shall we? Well, it is Dr. Vander Jack's job to be a leader in our district. It is not his job to get the teachers to like the board. That is your job as a board. I understand that there are certain things you cannot do as a board member. However, there are things that you can do. You are always welcome in district buildings and at district events. If you want to see, if you want to change how the teachers see you, be more present in their buildings, show an effort. Most importantly, listen to teachers when they put themselves on the line and make a public comment. And also, don't cast votes against what the majority of the teachers want. For example, the three of you casted votes against Ruler when the data clearly suggested that the majority of teachers supported this curriculum. You also want Dr. Vander Deck to solve your bad image within the community. Again, that is your job, not his. You bow to every woman of the extreme right group in our community. Barb, you are still a part of this Facebook group. Greg, you spoke about how Dr. Vander Jack is not uniting these two groups. However, it is you, Greg, Mark, and Barb that aren't helping by clearly pandering to the neutral ed group and refusing to even respond to emails from those who don't agree with your positions. These are problems that the board has made for itself. It is not Dr. Vander Jack's job to fix them. These problems occur mostly under the leadership of Barb Hoover. I am amazed, Barb, that you were reelected for president when last year, your leadership completely destroyed any positive feelings the community had for the board. She has made poor and decisive decisions at every turn, and yet you all allowed her to continue in this leadership position. Community members are sick of the infighting, and we are sick of you all saying, you'll be better, and then having certain members, Mark and Greg, continually bring up past group votes. You need to listen to your, all of your constituents and not just your echo chamber. If you don't change, the community will make the change for you. I personally can't wait until November when I have a chance to do something about it.
All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda. We have the following resolution is proposed that the board approve the consent agenda action items as presented. Andrew?
I support that.
Support from Mark. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposing sign? All right, next up, we have our regular action agenda, and first up, we have our human resource item, and Lily thinks you're going to take this one.
Yes, so I have the pleasure this evening of introducing Katie Moore as a recommendation for hire. Katie is going to, with your approval, move into a multi-tiered system of support and academic specialist position at Jamestown Upper. Katie comes to us from Cedar Springs, where she has served for approximately eight years, the last few years serving as what they call a literacy champion. And a literacy champion in Cedar Springs is really a culmination of a couple roles, one being what, working within multi-tiered systems of support and working to develop those systems. So it's a perfect fit. She also, another hat she wears in that role has been instructional coaching, and so... And so we're just thrilled that she is excited to make this transition here to Hudsonville and come alongside Jamestown Upper as they continue to grow in the multi-tiered systems of support work.
Either stand up or wave.
So we have resolved that the board approved the following certified higher recommendation as presented by Amy, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Caitlin Moore, for the position of MTS as Building Interventionalist for Jamestown Upper Elementary. So move. From Dawn.
Support.
Support from Andrew. Any questions for Amy or Caitlin? Welcome.
Welcome.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Opposing sign?
Welcome.
Welcome Caitlin.
There is, there is a slight correlation that the principal at Jamestown Upper also came from Cedar Springs. So at least you know each other, which is a great way to come in early and get going. So it's exciting.
Alright, next up, our high school science courses.
So we had the opportunity to review these at the work session and just wanted to clear up that the the document that you had updated has the accurate dates of when the courses were approved in the past for those that we have an approval date for. And so you'll see those courses here and I did not receive any additional questions about any of the courses that are listed. So I would just ask for recommendation for approval this evening.
So we have that the following resolution is proposed, resolve that the board approved the attached high school of science courses as presented by Amy Taylor, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Construction. So move. From Dawn.
I'll support that.
Support from Mark. Any questions?
I'll abstain from going to the skid of my summer science involvement.
Alright, any questions for Amy?
That should give you enough.
Yes, we do have four on the floor.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed same sign? Next up, we have our board policy updates and revisions.
Thank you. So I did, there were a few recommendations for revisions to the policies, but they were simply about the dates that were at the bottom. No language changes that were in there. There was a clarification about the terminology rater reliability, which is a term as educators we do use when we go through and make sure our raters, which would be our administrators, had consistency when they do their evaluation. So signs that the language has not changed based on our, when we covered it at the work session. This will be our first reading for these policies. Again, if there are recommendations for changes, we will bring this as a second reading at a special board meeting. Many of these policies will impact the changes that go into effect by law later in February. I will also tell the board, just to be quite frank, is some of these policies are still becoming fluid with legislature. So I would not be surprised if we come back to you right after our next meeting, say one of these policies, they now are interpreting different. So we're trying to do the best we can to stay at the top of it before it's required by law. So this is our recommendation for our first reading tonight. We do have a special meeting scheduled on February 15th. Thanks. And that will be, I think that's the only agenda I can land on, or that meeting is equipped on, but. That'll be a recommendation, right?
Alright, so we have the following resolution is proposed, resolve that the board approved the first reading of the following policy additions revisions as presented by Dr. Vanderjack and there were 11 policies.
I'll move that.
From Mark.
Support.
Support from Andrew. Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack on any of those policies? And again, we'll see them next week on Thursday. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign? Alright, next up, we have our report items.
Highlight of the night.
Oh goodness. I don't, okay. Wait, how was it prepared? No, I'm ready now. Okay. Very interesting stuff. Okay, alright, so I really, I know I say this every time, but I do not have that much to report out because we've only had one student council meeting since the last board meeting.
You've only had one full week of school since the last.
I need to find a reason. So I do have, we have voted as student council to approve for our student council scholarships. So we have five kids who have been on student council for all four years of high school. And so they each just get $500 for their effort and commitment towards student council. And four years of student councils a lot, like I could, I would know, you know. We did have our eighth grade orientation, so we had some of our seniors go to that and set up a little booth and just talk about to incoming eighth graders what student council is about, so that they can run as freshmen. We do, every year for Valentine's Day, we have our half a heart, which is basically we cut out half of a heart for enough kids, or for everyone, and write numbers on the hearts and then you have to find your match. So, you know, we like to set up like some couples, like. Sorry, spark. And then our last meeting.
How long do you get, dude? Is this a fun game? You buy your match.
Yeah, yeah. It's turning in and you get candy and you meet a new friend and it's great.
It's not only for dating. It's just something fun.
Thanks for clarifying me. And then we did have our last meeting, we had all of our exec board nominations. So all our juniors and sophomores running for the five executive board positions were nominated. So then our next meeting will have, if they accept it, they'll give a little speech and then we'll vote and have our new exec board for next year. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jane?
The clarification, $500 is a big deal if you're a parent with a kid and kind of yourself.
Yes, I am the third.
Have you had your winter dance yet?
Oh, that is the 16th, so Friday after basketball.
Any questions for Jane?
Is it, is that going to be in the field house or?
No, it is in the field house, so they're going to walk about a third of a mile, so that's how long it is. We measured it down to the freshman count of it.
Alright, thank you Jane.
Alright, we have updates from a few of our buildings. We'll start with Bauer Elementary in the back with Mr. Mirzma. We can give him a mic.
Alright, thanks. Good evening. I'm Josh Mirzma, principal at Bauer Elementary. Couple of quick updates from Bauer. We recently held a SOAR breakfast. This is something that we began implementing last year that's tied to our PBIS initiative. It's a bi-annual celebration of students who are consistently following building expectations and demonstrating high levels of character. Each teacher, classroom teacher nominated two students and then we had specialists nominate a student as well. Big shout out to our parents and students for their hard work and parents, you know, bringing kids up in the right way to be living examples in our hallways. And big shout out to our teachers as well. Every time we've held this, we've had probably about a 7:20 in the morning start. Every teacher has attended every single time. They don't get extra for it. They just want to come and celebrate with the kids. So it's a, it's cool. Mid-year academics, we finished winter benchmark testing and data dialogues concluded recently. Report cards will be going out tomorrow afternoon, no, report cards recently went out. I know what's going on, I swear. I know what's going on. These data dialogues are really an important opportunity for our staff to discuss student performance and then make next steps decisions. And then lastly, we have a Valentine's Day project that I haven't run for a couple of years. This is based around common teams in the building. So if you think of a third grade team plus a parapro that works closely with that team. So I basically create a spreadsheet and people who are somewhat connected, I send out emails to each staff member with names of people that they are to reply to that email with, with specific authentic praise about that individual that they work with. I compile a big email, schedule them to go out on the morning of Valentine's Day with this praise. So you might be wondering why I do this. I really feel it's important to create a living culture around positivity and positive feedback where we embrace each other. A quote from Fred Rogers that really helps to cement this idea of why we engage in this and why more of us should. Human relationships are primary in all of living. When the gusty winds blow and shake our lives, if we know that people care about us, we may bend with the wind, but we won't break. And the work that we do in schools is really hard. Teachers are siloed off a great majority of the day with kids and that is stressful and draining and taking care of each other helps us get through these years, especially these dark months. So I'm excited to share those emails with staff. I'll be compiling all those emails over winter break and I'm excited to see what happens on Valentine's Day morning. Thank you.
Turn over to, we're going to go next, well, based on where the mic is. Well, we're headed to Forest Grove at just a related birthday because of yesterday.
Alright, am I on? Perfect. Hey, it's enlightening to know that my sophomore will be finding his soulmate next week. A little bit, little bit scary, but that's, that's good to know. At the high school, one of the, it could be. One of the highlights at the elementary school is having a birthday. That ranks right up there with losing a tooth. And so I had a birthday this last week. It's been a super fun week and it happened to fall on the exact same day as day 100 of school. Now, we may be confused with that because we've had a lot of snow days. At Forest Grove, we celebrated day 100 on Tuesday, which was my birthday, which is super, super fun, a little confusing for some of our littles because they thought I was 100 years old. Sometimes I feel like I'm 100 years old, but super fun week with that. I'll tie in my second thing I wanted to talk about. Josh already mentioned lots of time this week sitting in meetings, but time well spent with each individual grade level, working on academic collaborative team stuff. So talking about our successes, celebrating those things, wrestling with things that we're still struggling with, making intervention groups, preparing for all that as well. And then the third thing to highlight is tomorrow, we got a fun thing happening too. So some representatives from Spartan Nash, the friendly owners of our local family fair here are going to be coming with TVA out to Forest Grove to interview me and talk to us about being the recipients of $1,000 that they're going to share with us, having a part of their campaign that's called One School at a Time. So looking forward to meeting with them and talking about cool things that are going on at our school that relate to SOAR. And so, thank you.
Next up, an update from Riley Street, Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the students and staff and families at Riley Street Middle School for the 16th year. I appreciate the opportunity to work with our families and our kids every day. We have 700 awesome students at Riley. I want to talk about four of them tonight. Four of our students were selected recently to participate in the, it's got a long title. I'm going to kind of shorten it down. It's called the MSBOA, Middle School Honors Orchestra. And this consists of 22 students from local middle schools and we had four students from Riley that participated last Saturday in that. I want to highlight one in particular, Yuna Kwan. She's a seventh grader in our building. Yuna was part of our newcomers program last year. She was new to not only Hudsonville, but she was new to this country. She came to us from South Korea. So Yuna has just excelled. She's involved in so many different athletic events and our student council program and it was just a highlight for her. The other three students were Caitlin Kern, Dakota Koeman, and Eden Davison that were able to participate in that last week. And that's just an exciting thing for our kids to be recognized and honored that way. We also have currently going on right now are the, I guess it's the rehearsals for our middle school musical. Middle School Musicals came on board about 12 years ago. Just really been an exciting thing for our kids. These are junior performances, so they're not real lengthy, but they give our kids a theater performance. And this is a combination of three schools now. The sixth graders at the 566 building in Baldwin and Riley. So they'll be performing Wizard of Oz in late April and we'll get that information out to you. So, and lastly, we've started our transition time. Want to thank Mr. Beal and our high school staff. They welcomed our, our eighth graders yesterday who are ready to be ninth graders. And we will shortly be welcoming the fifth graders from Forest Grove South and Jamestown in the next couple of weeks as we begin some of that transition work. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Next up, Mr. Beal at Payton High School.
Thank you. Jordan Beal, principal of the high school. And you hear from me every month and it seems like we were just here and I'll piggyback a little bit on what Jane and Mr. Ross said. It was a great night last night to have our class of 2028 in the building. And I mentioned last month that my son, my oldest, was in that group. So it was, it was really cool to see from a parent perspective how things kind of were with, with all of it and just seeing it through his eyes, I guess. Walked him over to the student council table and he got to talk to Frau Wedge a little bit about it. So I'm excited to see where that goes and thanks to Mr. Crete and Mr. Ross for promoting that. We had really great numbers. And it's that time of year that they're starting to sign up for classes already for next year. So the students, the current students ninth through 11th are also going through that process and our counselors do a great job of signing students up for their courses already for next year. So that's all going on right now. Jane, is it okay if I brag about you two in my update? She just found out she got into University of Michigan. Absolutely. I thought you were going to brag about yourself, but I thought if you didn't, I was going to tell.
I was getting a little nerdy when we were talking about AI because I think I'm going to go for computer science stuff, so.
Yeah, computer science at University of Michigan. You'll be writing the code that maybe generates some of this. So congratulations to Jane and thank you for serving here. One last thing I wanted to thank Amy in the curriculum office for, we also had a chance to have an early release focused on staff work and collaborative work with our PLC consultant, Josh Ray. So many of us got to spend the whole morning with him, some of our department leaders and administrators. And then we had some great collaborative time with our staff. So when students, you get to go home early, we're still working. And thanks to Amy and her leadership, we had some really great dialogue around PLC and cycle of inquiry process. And that work is going to continue and it's been really great so that teachers don't have to work in a silo. They work with each other to make sure all students are learning what they need to learn and we're doing that together. And a lot of that work is thanks to Amy and her department and all of the leaders in our, in our buildings and the rest of the team to my right here. So thank you. That's all for the high school.
Thanks, Mr. Beal. And thanks to all the administrators for your hard work. It's a, it's an interesting time of year when kids are on day 100 or 102. But you're, a lot of your focus is turning into what is the next school year look like as kids start to transition. New kids coming in, registrations open. It's just, it's a busy time of year. So thanks for all your hard work. I have quite a bit of an update this evening, but I would like to ask our cabinet members to give a quick update. We can start with maybe Mrs. Thomas. Give us a quick update and then I'll take it from you.
Sure. So one process that has recently wrapped up is we had a team of consultants from the Ottawa Area ISD come out to complete a monitoring process with our special education team or a subgroup of them to review our IEP documentation. So anytime a student receives special education services, they have a document called an individualized education plan and we call those IEPs. And they're dense documents that are full of a lot of data and a lot of description, but they're also tied to many, many compliance expectations as well as some best practices. And so this is a group of people that represented the K-12 spectrum and different roles in special education. So it was about a group of 15 people and we've spent about four days together. And I would say it is sometimes very hard to be super critical of your own work and have it be evaluated and viewed by, by other people. But throughout the process, multiple times, these consultants would come find me and say, your group is the best group that has gone through this process. They are so positive, so professional and they're eager to learn. And it's just, it was a very, what seems to be kind of a mundane task was really exciting because we were taking a lot of opportunities to reflect on all the things that we're doing really well and things that we can work on in the future and just start to make some plans for how that can come to be. So I'm just really proud of this group. We have an amazing group of special educators that care a lot about doing the job well. And then just something exciting, looking ahead, is a unified basketball game on March 5th. And so invitation for you to attend that as well.
So we had the opportunity this morning as an entire administrative team to go through our own data dialogue. You heard a couple of the administrators speak to the data dialogues that are happening in buildings around individual teacher data, right down to individual student data to see how they're progressing at this time of the year. That's part of our multi-tiered systems of support work and some of those systems to ensure that no child's going to fall both. fall in the cracks. We are paying attention. We are intervening and supporting every student to make progress. And so this morning, we had the opportunity as a team to take a look at the data from a building perspective, a grade level perspective, and then look across the district. And it was very valuable dialogue as we continue to strive to be better. We know, we talk about our data. We know that we outperform a lot of schools in the county and across the state, but that doesn't mean that we don't have room to improve and get better. That then launches into the professional development side of those, of that learning that we all have to do as adult learners. And Mr. Jordan, or Mr. Beal already spoke a little bit to the professional learning communities work that we're doing. We're actually partnering with Genesee Public Schools to bring a professional learning communities conference-type experience to all of our teachers. If we were to send teachers to a professional learning communities conference, it would be about $800 just to get them in the door per person. And we're hoping to get over 100 of our teachers enrolled in this learning experience. And it will just be a couple hundred dollars a person because of our partnership with Genesee Public Schools. We do intend to open it up to the county, but because we are the ones organizing it, we are first offering it to Hudsonville teachers and Genesee teachers. And then we'll be opening it up at the end of February to Ottawa County and eventually Kent and Meski. And we do wanna expand the offering. A lot of districts are doing this important work and we wanna collaborate, but we wanna first ensure our staff have the opportunity to attend.
As you can imagine, sending people to a conference out of state with lodging and meals. And so it's a lot different than sending them to a school that's four and a half miles away.
Yeah, intending to families, you know, people who have families at home, the whole thing. So very exciting opportunity. From a teaching and learning perspective, I had the opportunity yesterday to attend Junior Achievement, which is an organization in Grand Rapids that we are starting some partnerships with and super excited about how this may expand some of the relevancy that we're providing for students to connect with their learning in the classroom with some real life experiences. So for example, yesterday, we had 42 students who are in their financial management class attend a simulation at what is called Junior Achievement Finance Park. And so those 42 students, they had iPads and the way that the facility is set up, there's banking institutions within this simulation day. They go through a budget. They were meeting. There's a family fair that they went into and talked about how many, how much a family of four spends on groceries. So it's the whole experience of walking through, if this is my budget, this is my credit score, which they're learning about as well. So taking all of what they're learning in the classroom, walking through a simulation, what kind of car can I afford on this type of salary or hourly wage, whatever that may be. So just so many exciting, innovative things happening that our teachers are embracing and excited to see that opportunity yesterday in action.
What class was that?
That was financial, okay, I gotta look. Yes, I wrote it down. Financial management. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Just maybe, as Jordan says, a shout out for a group and then a shout out and an explanation on the next. Just like to recognize the snow plowing. I mean, we did have a brief winter. But during that time, I mean, it was pretty extreme. Just to say, like, under the leadership of Mr. Lee Arntz, what our custodial maintenance department does without being told, there's no way we could have pushed all the snow we got over that weekend at once. And then it just wouldn't happen. Plows break, all that kind of stuff. So just without being, really being asked, it's just the way they carry themselves, they came in and did multiple pushes, is what they call it. And it just, things that happen, that just happen seamlessly with, you know, within the, that doesn't always get noticed, but it makes it so the buildings can open, you know, when it was safe to get on the road. So just like, this is one of those things that's really amazing to see how they work together. And Lee's leadership is a huge component there. They're all leaders. I mean, every one of them lead within their systems. And then like to recognize the business and HR offices for their work. It's been really intense work for about 18 months. We're on our second live payroll with the new payroll software. And part of that time invested was just them taking the time to compassionately and thoughtfully convert leave codes, things like that. You've all worked in places where the business, HR, and tech department just took the vendor's recommendation and said, "This is how it's gonna be and this is what you get." And they didn't do that. From, to a person, the staff in the business and HR offices under Anne's leadership just did amazing work. And a lot of those, just can't say enough about their dedication and care of the teachers and all the other staff that take care of our kids. So just like to recognize them. It was tough, but they stayed the course and really proud of them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Briggs. I have a little bit of an update for you this evening. First, I'd like to start with a letter that I handed out to the board. It's a letter that outlines something we'd like to send to all of our parents in grades six through 12. Over the past, I'll say, few years, there has been an increase in what's called sex extortion. And I'll give you, I'll give you a kind of a version that could happen. A student gets a text message from somebody that they don't recognize, but it says, "Hey, I know you don't know me, but I know a friend of yours that goes to Hudsonville High School." And they say, "Oh, yeah." And then they go back and forth. Next thing you know, somebody sends one picture, somebody sends another picture. Next thing you know, it's an inappropriate picture. And then they say, "We're gonna post this online unless you pay $500." It's happening more and more. We've had several students over the course of the last two years that have had to deal with these types of things. It's very prevalent, not only in the state of Michigan, but throughout the country. The FBI has asked us to notify our parents so that they are aware, so that their kids are aware that number one, the first rule of thumb is don't share information over anything that is inappropriate to begin with. Number two, don't communicate with people you're not aware of. And number three, don't pay money to somebody that you don't know. And going from there, to contact a local authority, local law authority. So I drafted a letter, working with Mike Petroleum, getting this information out to our families. I would like to show you a quick video. It's a two-minute video that is also linked in this letter that we go out to families. So if I can show that a minute, I think it will work.
This is an important message from the FBI in Michigan. In our state, the FBI is tracking a rapid number of children being targeted by a dangerous crime called sex extortion. Sex extortion is a form of blackmail when an individual threatens to expose previously exchanged new or sensitive photos unless their demands are met. You may think that this crime only impacts high school age students. It does not. The FBI has seen victims in Michigan as young, as seven years old. Typically, financial extortioners demand that children send them money or gift cards. They threaten, if children do not comply, they will share their compromising photos with the child's friends and family. The FBI has observed at least a 20% increase in reporting of this crime. In Michigan alone, four children since 2021 have died of suicide after being targeted. This blackmail happens on social media, via cell phones, tablets, and on gaming platforms and apps. Even if the children in your life do not have one of these devices, their friends do. These blackmailers are savvy and know how to zero in on children's greatest vulnerability.
That fear encourages you and your family to have an open and honest conversation about sex extortion. Encourage the children in your life to speak to a trusted adult. If you suspect that someone has been the victim of sex extortion, please contact local enforcement or the FBI directly at one eight hundred call FBI or at tips.fbi.gov. The FBI has resources online about this crime and how you can keep your loved ones safe. You and your child have an opportunity to save someone's life. Together, we can put an end to sex extortion.
So we'd like to send this letter out to parents. I wanted to share that with the board. If you have questions, please let me know. Follow up. We're not sending it out this evening. We'd like to get it out tomorrow at some point as we go into lockdown. Not an lightning conversation, but I think one that we do need to have, our families need to have with their kids. Any questions? I know I'm giving it to you right now, but any questions?
They'll have a link to the video, won't they?
It's right in the email. There's two links to the video that go.
Thank you.
On another note, we have finalized our documentation for the non-Homestead millage. There are two proposals. Sharing this with the board. I did share it with our administrators earlier today. I do want to thank Pat Briggs, Stephanie Fast, helping to get this information together. And quite frankly, our legal firm to make sure everything's okay, to cross the Ts and dot the Is on what we can publish. We will be putting this on our website soon. And this is the information that is shared with BTOs, with booster clubs, with parent meetings when we cover this information. I would encourage board members to make sure you are well aware of how this is truly two proposals. The one is for 18 mils, which is the normal millage rate that we've always asked for, for four years on that. The second millage proposal is for two mils that generates $0 because it's the heavy override. So please, if there are questions on there, if you have questions, please let me know. I want to make sure you are informed. So if people ask you, which they will, you are informed what this looks like. And again, if there are any, if there's anybody out there and I told our team this, please do not hesitate to have them contact me if they have questions. I will meet with anybody, anywhere, anytime to make sure they are informed before they vote. I'm not gonna tell people how to vote, but I do think it's important to be informed before you vote. So any questions about the documentation? Do you have the ballot proposals? Do you see both the first ballot, the second ballot, and all the information regarding the non-Homestead coming up with the first today, after the first Monday, and next? It's a lot, but it's well done. Stephanie, thank you very much for working on it. Let's see. I am excited. I haven't talked about this before, but our field house, you think is open, it's really not. It's open for basketball. Jane, I'll attest to that. We will be opening the field house in its full capacity for our students to be in that facility starting February 19, which is exciting. So another week and a half. We have a short week next week and then the kids will come in, the 19, so there'll be the weight room, locker rooms, upstairs track, tennis, fitness area, health room. Right now, the only rooms being used truly are wrestling and the gym court. We still will be working on facility usage for outside of the traditional day. We will, our first focus will be how do we get our kids access to more opportunities in that facility? That's gonna take time to iron out. And then after that, we'll look at community use and that just takes time to iron everything out. So one of the, I know Anne's not here, thank Anne for her work on that, obviously, and Mr. Beal, Mr. Parkus, and Mr. Glass, our athletic directors at the high school, Mr. Carbot, our strength and conditioning coordinator, just the work that's taking place. And all of this wouldn't happen without Mr. Briggs' due diligence when it comes to construction in almost every facility we have right now. Just a couple of other quick construction updates. The gymnasium and the two classrooms at Bauer Elementary are coming along very nicely. I was there today. They look great. I think there's gonna be a little sneak peek for some of the teachers tomorrow to look at it. We're getting close, sending for maybe a month or two away from meeting the kids, at least into the gymnasium part of it, which will, for the most part, at least make the custodian happy when it comes to the transition between lunch, gym, lunch, gym. And I think there's four or five minutes between that break to clean the place up before they do gym. So that'll be a great, a great experience. Real quick with the board, traditionally this time of year, we've asked the board to vote on the M A S B ballot for who you nominate for your representative for this region. Rick Denberger from Zeeland is running unopposed, so you don't get to vote. If you don't want him to be your representative, it doesn't matter because he will be your representative. So I would encourage maybe this board to entertain an idea of somebody from this board. Not running against him per se, but at least putting that name out there. I know that it might be nice to say, you know what, we have a presence in this county too. Zeeland's not in for a while. Maybe it's time to say, we have somebody from this board. So we'll talk more about that when we get later through the year. And then last but not least, I had a chance to connect with, I know Dr. Hooper has, working on a self-assessment for the Board of Education. And every board member, I believe, has either had the opportunity or will by the end of, hopefully by the end of tomorrow, I think, was the goal of the assessment. The idea, I did have a chance, the consultant, his name is Frank, and I'm not gonna be able to pronounce it because it's, it's, oh, she left. It's equally as challenging as our, the young lady that's running for assistant prosecutor. But I had a chance to talk to him today about dates and so forth. He was going to get back to me as he was traveling. Before I board meeting, I sent him dates this morning. I hadn't heard back. So I have a list of all dates. We have two options. Number one, I can go through all of these dates quickly and you can say yes or no. I can start crossing them off. Or I can have Robin send them tomorrow and you tell me. I did have a chance to meet with Dr. Hooper, Mr. Bullheist. And actually, I talked to Mr. DeWitt about some of the dates. Not that I'm questioning other people's schedules, but those were three schedules that I know we had to try to get on the same page to start with. What do you prefer, Dr. Hooper?
If Kent's not here, why don't we have Robin send it out?
We'll send that out tomorrow. We'll get those dates and go. And then hopefully I'll hear from him and we can cross off whatever dates fell for. We're really focusing, just so you, if you put in your mind, we're really focusing on early March and then I'll say the rest of March, the middle of the week. Unless you have the Friday next, but that's kind of what we're gonna do. That is my update for the night.
Any questions? We're not gonna manage it.
Why don't we finish our evening then with a board roundtable? And I will start on my lap. Robin?
Had a great time yesterday being a shark at Ryan's building. These are amazing kids. Great time of life, eighth graders, I believe. And the disparity of height and size is amazing at their age and voice changes, but they were a lot of fun. Thanks for that privilege of doing that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, same. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for doing the same at Riley. It's always good to get in front of students. And it's really impressive, actually. I know you guys could probably attest to this too. Some of the items sometimes aren't super creative, but the way that those students present themselves, right? The confidence that they have, it's just a really cool opportunity for them and also for us too. It's kind of a flashback in time to think about how we were in that stage of life. So it's a really cool thing. So thank you, Bull. Ryan, sorry I couldn't make it. I committed myself to Riley today, but thanks for the invitation. And welcome Caitlin. It's really good to have you here. And Mr. Briggs, well, thank you for all you're doing at Bauer. And thanks for the invitation to the SOAR breakfast. That was a really cool thing. It's awesome to be able to eat at school. So, good stuff. Thank you, everybody.
I also had the opportunity to attend the Shark Team yesterday at both the middle schools. And there were probably about 30 or 40 kids that came before the groups that I was with. And you know, some of these kids are extremely confident in what they're doing. And you look at them and you say to yourself, you know, these kids, they're not gonna have any problems in that. And then there's other kids who were, some were a little bit cocky at that age and stuff like that. They probably won't have any problems. But then you've got some of the kids who were just terrified. And their self-confidence was not where anyone would want it to be. And yet, as I watched them and I watched the teachers standing behind them and coaching them and giving them support when the kids needed support. And then there was a, there was a young lady, one of the parents from your school, Joss, her name was Jessica. And she could just, she was one of the Sharks with me and she could just sense when these kids were afraid and when they needed a boost and that kind of stuff. And just the way that she and a couple other of them were able to interact with these kids was phenomenal. And I just wanna, I just wanna commend the folks who put this together. They were very, the process was very easy to follow. But just watching them and observing them, working with the different stages that the kids were at, that was very impressive to me. And especially the kids, like I said, who didn't have the confidence that they need right now. Not only Not only recognizing that, but then stepping in and doing something about it. And it was, it was very impressive. And thank you for that opportunity to see your groups in action. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I also had the opportunity to volunteer for Shark Tank and it was an awesome event. I just wish that Riley and Baldwin didn't do it on the same day.
It's not usually like that.
Last year at Riley's, I went to Baldwin.
Did you just play meat or something?
Everything is your fault. But one of the things I, I was amazed, at least of all the students that presented at our table, was how well they presented. And it wasn't about, it's not about the idea that they come up with. It's really about working with them on their presentation skills and getting them to speak in front of people. I only had one student use a three-by-five note card. All the other students spoke without a note card, which was amazing. You know, to speak like that and to speak for up to two to three minutes, it was amazing. They did great. And I, I commend the teachers because it's a great experience. You know, for eighth graders, they did an awesome job. So thank you both, Phil and Brian, for supporting that.
It's always one of my favorite activities and I apologize that I haven't been able to do it. I have plenty of children at my home on Tuesday and Wednesday. They show me their own experiments. So unfortunately, it didn't work this year, but I appreciate that. Stephanie, just want to thank you for the pictures that you post. John, I love seeing the picture of you with the four hundred-year-old kids sitting next to you. It's so precious that we share that amongst the community. We, if you're part of the Facebook group, so thanks, Stephanie, for what you put on there. And then also, you know, Mandy, as, as you were talking today, it reminded me of how much work you've done when it comes to compliance and how that's something that we don't see very often. And I have to believe that since you've been here, the number of IEPs and individualized plans for students has increased significantly. So again, you're maybe considered to be a behind-the-scenes person, but I appreciate the work that you've been doing. So thank you.
All right. Well, with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I'll move that.
Support from you?